But we do move our upcoming events to the back of the agenda, so I would ask, please stick around for that, and please stick around for all of the announcements. We don't have a lot of movement in the room, so we're respectful to all five of our great candidates who are announcing for school board this evening. Okay, the basic rules are that each candidate gets five minutes to speak, and they have the option of having someone introduce them for two minutes, and so we will have introductions as well for all of the candidates. As those of you who've been to these meetings before know, I am ruthless with the time. So you saw the two Sergeant-at-Arms candidates and how they ended right on time, it's because they know I will come out and I will physically pull them off the stage. Right? It's never actually come to that, but it's been close, folks. So just a word of warning, please keep to the times, we'll be respectful of everybody, and everybody's got the same fair shot. So I think those are the general rules. We did do a drawing at the start of the meeting to determine orders, so that it would be as random and as fair as possible. And the first person who is going to be announcing tonight is Simone Walker, and she is going to be introduced by Abel Galata, who is a student at Washington Liberty High School. Go next, Simone.
My name is Abel Galata, and I'm a junior at WNU, and I'm here on behalf of Simone Walker's campaign for school board. During my sophomore year, I was in field of reference for Alfonso Lopez's campaign for state delegate, and met a lady through the campaign that suggested I attended NAACP meetings due to my political engagement in social justice interests. At my first education subcommittee meeting, I met Simone Walker. Simone was just starting to see a student, and was thrilled to be able to work with me. The interactions between us made me realize her true passion for students. Ms. Walker is a parent of two students that are currently in APS, and she is always working hard to refine APS for her children and the many other students that are part of APS. As a student, witnessing her passion and advocacy for students, I appreciate her work. Both of my parents are immigrants who have a difficult time understanding what is going on with the APS system overall. Unfortunately, APS is full of families just like mine who lack the inherent understanding of the system and how to take advantage of all the opportunities it offers. I learned quickly that Simone is a positive figure who's advocating for students like me, as I continue to attend these meetings and advocating for students like me. And as I continue to attend these meetings, Simone truly exemplifies her dedication and advocacy for all students. She regularly attends school board meetings to express the issues that are present in our school system. She cares about equity, equity for students of color, equity for immigrant students, equity for disabled students, and equity for LGBTQA students. Simone offers the type of representation that is important for all students across APS. All those students have those type of father role models. When I first moved to the United States in the second grade, my teachers assumed I would be unable to learn the same cases as my peers because of the language barrier. It's led me to be expelled for years and prevented me from achieving my true academic potential. Eventually, in my freshman year, my math teacher gave me the opportunity to get admitted to school, which he decided to allow me to take two math classes in that year. That opportunity granted by my teacher has allowed me to enroll in a college-level math course this school year. I am confident that Simone will work hard to tweak the system in order to help students challenge that bit of hindrance, do things in their current neckties, and help them reach their group potential. This is my pledge and intention, Christina.
Good evening. So who is Simone Walker? Well, I too am an immigrant from Jamaica who came to Northern Virginia nearly 33 years ago at 16. I started my education at Nova Community College, then transferred to George Mason, and graduated with a bachelor's in psychology. I then pursued my paralegal certificate at Georgetown and worked for a government contractor for four years before going to law school. I received my JD from American University, Washington College of Law in 1998. I'm really dating myself. And my L11 in litigation and dispute resolution from George Washington University in 2001. I worked as a DOJ attorney for 20 years, and also as a DOJ mediator for 18 years. My family has very deep roots here in Arlington. We've owned and operated AA Locksmith Service for 40 years. We opened up in 1980 in what used to be Adams Square Mall on the Pike. How many of you know that? But due to the development of Penrell Square, relocated to Thames Street in Clarenham. My younger siblings attended Swanson and Williamsburg, and both graduated from Yorktown. But most importantly, I am the mom of two middle schoolers at Gunston who are the center of my world, and whose permission and endorsement I first obtained in order to run for school board. Do you need to come to a please today? Because while we are a good school district, we can be so much better. I envision an APS that's equitable, where no student's languish behind their peers, where every decision is made through an equity lens, meaning who needs more gets more, where burdens are considered, not just benefits, and where no voices are missing from the conversation. I envision a mindful APS that is trauma-informed, where administrators, teachers, staff, SROs, and even parents are prepared to recognize and respond to those who have been impacted by traumatic stress, where mental health is prioritized and seamlessly integrated into every school because we maintain the recommended ratios of counselors, social workers, and psychologists, where we know that this is how to prevent school shootings. I envision a conscious APS which boldly addresses systemic biases, because it has courageously faced the truth of the past and reconciled its segregationist history. Only then can we begin to address our implicit biases and learn to work through difficult conversations with each other. I envision a depressurized APS where our students aren't overburdened with unnecessary testing, where no opportunity gaps exist, where achievement is not based on your zip code, where our graduates are truly career or college-ready, where they know how to think critically and analytically, where they know how to research and write a stellar position paper, where they are well-versed in rhetoric and can debate all sides of an issue with ease, where they value collaboration over competition, where they have a solid command of physics, a real understanding of our civil rights history, and where technology is a tool and not a teacher. I envision an inclusive APS where learning disabilities and giftedness are identified and addressed early, where learning differences, neurodiversity, and all disabilities are valued and celebrated for its unique strengths, where we embrace the science of reading, where parents don't have to fight for services or pay exorbitant sums for private remedies. I envision a diverse APS that is representative of the student body with well-trained, well-compensated teachers who are not overburdened and are supported, and are also supportive as part of their student's education. And I envision a fiscally responsible APS that can curtail wasteful spending and operate under fiscal constraints without compromising students' education or our teachers' compensation. I believe all of this is doable. The school board has a fiduciary responsibility to deliver no less than excellence in educational parity to every student. Arlington certainly has the means to do it, and I'm running for school board to raise that bar. Thank you.
Next up, we're running for a second school board candidate, Christina Diaz Torres, who is being introduced tonight by Commonwealth's Attorney, Porsha Dikgani Taffey.
Good evening, friends. Don't start my time yet. I just want to say, looking at this room really is giving me so much hope for the future, that I was getting choked up over that, looking at the diversity and looking at the energy, and I'm just really excited that you all are here and engaged, so thank you. Tonight, I have the distinct and absolute pleasure of introducing Christina Diaz Torres as a candidate for the Arlington School Board. Our schools are the jewel in the crown of Arlington. More than any other public office, a candidate running for school board has to answer a single-word question: Why? So why Christina? Because she believes in, and is committed to, an Arlington where all students, regardless of their background, race, color, or creed, are valued, nurtured, and given the tools to succeed. Why Christina? Because her deep experience as a pre-K assistant teacher, as a high school math teacher, and as an education policy consultant makes her uniquely suited to devise programs and policies our schools and our students will need to compete in the world. Why Christina? Because she and I share the same philosophy, that in an ever-more-complex world, where our public institutions need most is a commitment to data-driven and evidence-based policies. Why Christina? Because above all else, our kids are the center of our universe, the sun, the moon, and the stars, our north, our south, our east and west. Nothing, nothing is more important than their happiness, their wellbeing, than their welfare. And as a parent, I trust with my whole heart that Christina will be a thoughtful advocate for them, a fierce defender, and a caring guardian. She will bring to her work a passion and innovation, kindness and intelligence, vision and devotion, care and compassion. I'm proud to call her a friend and colleague, and proud herself to introduce her as the next board member for the Arlington County School Board.
Thank you, Porsha, for that truly incredible introduction, and to the Arlington Democrats for allowing me to speak tonight. I am Christina Diaz Torres, and I am running for school board because I believe that we can build an Arlington Public Schools that serves all of our students. The students of Arlington deserve a public school board with experience, the tenacity, and the vision to be able to make APS the number-one school district in the Commonwealth for all of our kids, not just some of them. And I have built a career doing just that. As a teacher, an education policy professional, and an active member of this community, I have shown that I can not only advocate for students, but I can deliver results. As your next board member, I will focus on three things: educators, data, and equity. But before I tell you about my platform, a little bit about myself. To be totally honest, I never thought that I was going to end up in education. But then I got a part-time job as an assistant pre-K teacher at a head start in New York City, and it was, the education bug bit me. If you want to see a really difficult job, try teaching 15 three-year-olds how to count. That completely sparked my passion for education. I went on to get a master's degree in curriculum instruction, and I became a high school math teacher in Nevada. My first day of teaching high school, I had 54 students in my classroom and only 48 desks. Think about the message that that budget choice sends to your students. You don't have a seat here. There is nowhere for you to learn. You are not welcome. I did everything within my passion to remediate that budget message. I made sure that my students were seen, that they were valued, that they were heard, and that they could succeed. But after several years, I realized that I couldn't do it alone. Even though I had an amazing impact on my students, there were systemic barriers that were impeding their opportunity to succeed. I knew that there were policies that were made and written by folks who were very, very well-intentioned, but they were often written by people who had no experience in the classroom and no understanding of the implications of the policies that they were writing. So I went to Capitol Hill, where I served as a legislative fellow for Senator Sheldon Whitehouse, working on K-12 education policy. There, I learned the strengths and frankly, the limitations of federal policy, and it reinforced the need to have teachers, community leaders, parents, and students at the table when you're writing a policy. Now, I spend the days supporting education organizations through strategic consulting. I've worked with districts, state education organizations, wow, I can't say words now, nonprofits, and philanthropy to create policies that benefit students of color and students from low income backgrounds. And there's one project that I'm really proud of. I'm originally from Puerto Rico, and in the summer of 2018, we went down there to support them in redesigning the professional development system in the aftermath of Hurricane Maria. We brought together teachers, school leaders, community voices, and established a framework that prioritized instruction over niche initiatives. We successfully procured federal funding, and we put a teacher leader in every single school to support their teachers. Outside of that, I've always also been a leader here in Arlington. For the past three years, I've been a member of this Arlington Public Schools Budget Advisory Committee, Arlington County Fiscal Affairs Advisory Commission, and the Joint Facilities Advisory Council, or I'm sorry, the Joint Facilities Advisory Commission. There, I've had a unique holistic vantage point of the challenges we face as a country, or as a county. I read both of our budgets, it's super fun. We've grown significantly over the past decade, and we're going to continue growing, but this means that we're going to be running out of space, and we already are. We need to think creatively about how we build, where we build, what we design, and making sure that we're not adversely affecting our communities. We need to design flexible, cost-efficient solutions that provide our students and community with the services that they deserve, while also being judicious about putting our money where our mouth is. Our budget should say that we believe in every single student from every single zip code, no matter their background, no matter their ability level, no matter their race, color, or creed. As your next board member, I will focus on educators, data, and equity. First, I will ensure that we have transformative educators with support, resources, and skills that they need to serve every student in every single classroom. When I talk to families across APS, the thing that shines most is our deep appreciation for our teachers. We need to make sure that they can afford to live here by compensating them competitively. Second, we need to improve how we share our data with the public, so we can all see who our system's impact. No more hard-to-read or interpret tables or visuals than hide data from the public. And finally, I'm going to bring an equity lens to budget and construction, particularly as our district evolves to serve our community. Every decision about spending should center on one question: How will this decision make APS the number-one school district in the Commonwealth for all of our students, no matter their background, race, ability, family context, or legal status?
Next up, we are going to be hearing for our third candidate, David Pretty, who will be introduced by community activist Nicole Marlene.
Thank you, Bill. And, all right, good evening, Arlington Democrats. I am so excited to be here tonight to introduce my good friend, David Pretty, for his campaign for school board. I am confident that David should earn one of your two votes that you have for a school board. And whether you have kids or not, this is going to be an extremely important school board election. APS uses half of our county's budget, and a large part of the board's role is being an effective administrator. Professionally, David has managed multimillion-dollar budgets, overseeing union staff, and is someone that I would completely trust with the helm of a massive administrative organization. At Arlington, he is currently serving on the building-level planning committee for the Career Center expansion, and serving on the Civic Federation Schools Committee and NAACP Education Committee, the Arlington Heights Schools and Facilities Committee, all focused on our schools and facilities and budgets. So, in addition to that, David has been in the game, is not only an APS graduate himself, he has two young children, which is, I think, unique, especially with the retirements that we will be having this year on the school board, and having really an impact on what his kids' future is. David has not only has two kids here, but moving around children and redistricting is more than just a data point. Who we hire in the current administrative turnover really matters for his kids. And he doesn't just talk the talk, but he's really walking the walk by serving as the president of the TJ Middle School PTA and serving on the county's council of PTAs. Now, finally, he has what it takes on substance. A large part of what makes Arlington a great place to live is the quality of our schools, and that we have quality schools for everyone. David serves as the NAACP representative on the Advisory Council on Instruction, which is extremely influential on coursework and rigor. He's served on the superintendent's advisory committee on excellence for the past couple of years, and truly, David is the full package, and I cannot wait for you to learn more about him and vote for him for Arlington High School.
Such nice words from someone whose work ethic I admire wholeheartedly. Hello, Arlington Democrats. Good evening. I'm David Pretty. The last time I was up here, I told a detailed history of who I am, since I'm sure you remember that one, and because I don't want to get the yank from jail. I'll give you the short version. I was raised a die-hard Democrat. My parents met and got married in the Peace Corps, and they had took me to various marches in Washington, DC, anti-nuclear weapons rallies, Earth Day, ERA Equal Rights Amendment, and pro-choice. And to that, I have taken my kids. Two years ago, we went down to the March for Our Lives rally to, because of the department shooting, and where they marched as well. Fast forward to last year, where I did my faithful precinct duty and dropped off the messenger carol, and worked the polls on Election Day with my kids, and I was there when we turned Virginia blue. So I have Democratic roots, and have instilled those in my kids. I'm a proud product of APS, elementary school, middle school, high school, there you go. My kids are following the same suit, and it's important to note, because the perspective of having kids at these ages is not currently represented on the board. The school board, the policies that are enacted, have a direct impact, a day-to-day impact on my life, on my kids' life, on the teachers that I talk to, on the schools that my kids go to. My perspective is relevant and representative. Professionally, I have 12-plus years in the elevator business, managing branches in Burbank and Santa Barbara in Northern Virginia, where I've had to manage budgets and profit and loss, and as Nicole said, multimillion-dollar operational tasks. I have been put in those situations where I need to make cuts or sacrifices to hit budget numbers, so I have experience of making business decisions that are in the best interest of the community. Arlington Democrats, 40% of the school board is up for election. There is a new superintendent coming. There are several assistant superintendents in place. You have the opportunity to shape the next four years in APS. You have the opportunity to add your input now in this election. So I ask you, if you believe in equity for all students, in other words, if you believe that our students with disabilities, our students with differing socioeconomic backgrounds, our gifted students, our students in general education, and our students of color deserve the proper resources, if you believe in fiscal responsibility, if you believe we need new solutions to account for future projections, if you believe we need to revamp our boundary process, and if you believe that we should always be trying to improve in APS and not be complacent, then I request your vote. The choice on the Democrats is yours. I have the longstanding Democratic values, the history in Arlington and with APS, and the unique perspective that is relevant and representative. I humbly ask for your vote in May. I am David Pretty.
Okay, we have our fourth school board candidate. I'd like to welcome up to the stage Sandy Munnel, who will be introduced by community activist Sarah Conable.
I'm Sarah Conable. I'm an APS grad as well. I'm an APS employee. I'm the mother of two future APS students. I'm here tonight because I believe it is high time for another career educator to sit on the APS school board. I met Sandy Munnel in 2001, and immediately connected with her as a new hire. She hosted all of us to her house to gather and calm our nerves. It was a kind gesture, and it put us at ease, but that's not why she did it. She nudged us to form a cohort of lasting relationships, because teaching is a hard profession. Yes, it's inspiring, yes, it's rewarding. It's also isolating and very full of emotional distress, especially now in Arlington Public Schools. This memory is a little glimpse into why I think Sandy's insider knowledge of education, this longtime teacher, this grandmother of APS students, brings to the table for us. Sandy once told me, when I received my first leadership nomination, that it was time for me to learn about the business of education, and she knows the business of education. She understands what it takes to run a successful classroom, school, and school system, all different facets. She's worked in APS for so long and is acutely aware of what is working and what isn't. But she knows that K-12, the key to all great schools, are key teachers. Unless the business side of education functions in such a way that allows teachers to do the good work, then policy entanglements become poorly translated, and teachers, administrators, parents, and students become overwhelmed. This is why, for the past 10 years, I've been proudly writing in Sandy Munnel at the ballot box. I would be thrilled to fill in a bubble next to her name this year. I'm proud to introduce to you Mrs. Sandra Munnel.
I have face-down parent meetings, I have face-kids every day, but I don't think I've ever been as nervous as I am at this very moment. So I spend a lot of time looking down, I apologize if I'm not making great eye contact. My family will tell you, that quickest way to get me on a rant is to send me an article that says our schools are failing. I don't believe that's true in general. I know that is not true in Arlington. Arlington has great schools. This school system ranks among the best in the state. Each of our high schools has consistently ranked in the top 100 nationally. Our on-time graduation rate is 92%. We have a broad array of special programs which enrich the opportunities for our children. We educate a very diverse student population, and we get educated by them. But as the financial planners always say, past performance does not guarantee future success. Our excellence will be challenged by a population that continues to grow, presenting new instructional and logistical requirements. And there are gaps. Students aren't always achieving, not thriving, as many others may be. In short, we can always be better. For example, we have performance gaps for some of our ethnic and economic populations. We have populations which are disproportionately represented in our disciplinary process. These are national problems, these are problems in Arlington. One of those keys is reading. Reading skills are an indicator of the gaps, and we have challenges with this across the curriculum in Arlington. Frustrated children, stop and act out. We have to intervene with these children early. We do have strategies and programs to address these skills, but I'm not convinced that they have been implemented with consistency and competence across our school system. To achieve the competency, we need talent and stability in our teachers. Our supervisors and principals struggle to implement even the best program when they have to integrate new teachers into their staff each year. We are starting to lose teachers to neighboring jurisdictions, who are offering better support to the classroom through specialists, through social services, through aides, and yes, better pay. That's a real change for Arlington. Every decision we take has to be focused on how it will support what goes on in our classrooms, and if we do not keep quality teachers in those classrooms, we cannot expect quality results. On a different note, Arlington Schools have a stated goal of preparing children for college and career. We've been quite successful on the college side. More students are taking advanced placement courses than ever before, and I've written letters of recommendation to some of the finest universities in this country, lots of letters. But it's not clear that we have done as well for those students whose interests and talents may not yet be college-oriented. We need to do our part to enable the many different aspirations of our students. We need to do our part to enable the many different aspirations of our students. As Sarah said, I have two grandchildren in Arlington schools. In their experiences, I have already seen some of the opportunities and challenges that Arlington parents, that Arlington presents to the families. I've spent my entire professional career, and now some of my retired life, trying to spark the passion of my students and enabling them with the tools to pursue their passions. My grandchildren love their teachers, love their school, and love learning new things, just as I wished for my students. I want that to continue for them, and I want that to be the case for all of our students in Arlington. I have lived the impact that policy and leadership can have on the classroom, both the good and the bad. Therefore, I'm stepping outside of my career in the schools to bring that perspective to the school board. I am well-qualified to evaluate the solutions brought before the school board. I believe I can help my colleagues on the board to translate and interpret some of the data that can seem often very baffling. And with my history of instructional technology innovation, I am confident that I can offer some vision and moderation to the planning for continued excellence in Arlington schools. You can find my website at SandyForSchools, and contact me on various social media platforms. I welcome your opinions and your thoughts, even your rants, and I will welcome the opportunity to lead your school.
All right, our fifth school board candidate we'll be announcing tonight is Tyrone Sims, and he will be introduced by community activist Portia Clark.
It is indeed a pleasure to introduce to you someone who I've known for many years. For most of those years, he's been encouraging me to run as a candidate for school board, along with several others. Tyrone has been engaged and involved as an education and community activist in Arlington almost since his return as a veteran from Iraq, where he was engaged in education and the schools. Tyrone, known for hanging out and engaging in many political roles with governors, senators, congressmen, and others, but mostly remembered for the roles he has served in mentoring the youth of Arlington and being an advocate for them at all levels. He's often working behind the scenes and doing the work that is sometimes overlooked. Tyrone ran for school board in 2008, and I wondered why someone with no children would consider such a role. I had children and did not see myself in this role. I came to understand that Tyrone was someone who considered every child his child. He is like no other candidate, a former veteran school advocate, leader, and someone who has skills needed. He understands the budget process and how Arlington Public Schools operates. He's willing to fight for our children, and now his own. He has served unselfishly on the superintendent's committee and several other committees over the years. He's able to look at the big picture, think strategically, and plans to make a difference in the lives of those he will represent. I know this from working with him on many programs in our community and in others. He's worked with me on the Team Network Board with the Arlington Partnership for Youth and Families, and mentored many of our youth who've now gone on to college and taking them to West Point, his alumni. He took on AMAC and led the effort to return Drew to the community and AMAC to its own facility. Today, he serves with our civic association in many roles and has helped us with stopping the violence and preparing our youth for the future. I'm very pleased tonight to present to you Mr. Tyrone Sims as a uniquely qualified candidate and future leader of Arlington Public Schools.
As an active Arlington Democrat, many of you know me, you are unaware of my work in education. My mother's a college president. Her parents were lifelong teachers, with my dad's ninety-year-old mother, Alberta, whom I affectionately call "Muh," who inspired my education advocacy. You see, Muh barely has a third-grade education. And when I say barely, I mean that when it was planting season, she worked the fields; when it was harvest season, she worked the fields. When her family needed extra money, she worked in the homes of white families. As much as my great-grandfather loved Muh, he did not value education. He valued work. In his opinion, Muh attending school was a waste of time. Despite Muh's lack of formal education, being a single mother from an abusive marriage, and raising her family in the projects, she prioritized education upon her nine children. Muh was so serious about education that she made two of her sons repeat the sixth grade when they ended the school year with C averages. Muh's triumph is that of, of her nine children, there are seven bachelor's degrees, four postgraduate degrees, three veterans, a retired police officer, a federal appellate judge, and my dad, a retired Marine Corps colonel. Well, Muh's like journo taught me, that one's one in the pack, that I have a lot to give a lot. As an Army officer deployed to Baghdad's second-largest district of 1.25 million people, I oversaw the formation of the school's PTAs and monthly assessments, focusing on security and education resources. For over thirty, for over thirty schools, I allocated and supervised a million dollars in school refurbishments. When I began down the path of education and youth advocacy in Arlington in 2006, I tutored and mentored in the county in various programs at Hoffman, Boston, Drew, Williamsburg, Wakefield, and Harvey Hall. I worked with the Team Network Board, NHC, and T tutoring program, where last year I received its Volunteer of the Year award, and currently serve on its Board of Directors. With my mentor, the late Dr. Talon Williams, we formed Parents Allied for Student Success, where we assisted parents in APS student advocacy, and Computer for Students, providing donated computers to needing families. As the years progressed, I began serving on various APS committees and commissions, such as the FACE and Whole Child Working Groups, and the previous Strategic Plan Steering Committee. I've chaired the superintendent's committee to eliminate the achievement gap for the past several school years, which we re-titled Equity and Excellence, to remain consistent with current state education terminology. My years of education advocacy have led me to serve the role of both friend and advisor to countless school board members, APS senior staff, principals, and parent advocacy groups, and PTAs, in creating consensus in policy and messaging, and most importantly, solving problems. Being that equity is today's cause for action, it seems that the best one to tackle said issue is one who has dealt with equity his entire life. Little Tyrone's education journey was not smooth. I received bad grades that teachers could not logically explain to my parents, and at times was improperly disciplined and mistreated by teachers. Most classic is my high school guidance counselor questioning my worthiness to even apply to West Point. Tackling equity is what I've been fighting throughout my advocacy. My shining a light on APS's inequities within the Drew graded program was what led to the Montessori program attaining its own building and the undoing of bad desegregation policy with the full return of Drew to the Green Valley community. Understanding that solving the issues of equity is systemic in nature, when the new strategic plan was crafted, my team diligently worked to ensure that equity, inclusion, and opportunity were clearly positioned throughout all of the strategic plan, for academic achievement does not fall solely under the purview of instruction. Educator Martha Collins said, "When someone is taught the joy of learning, it becomes a lifelong process that never stops, a process that creates a logical individual." That is the challenge and joy of teaching. My job as an educator has always been to bring a love of learning to our kids and to ensure that upon graduation, they're on a path to success, whether it's college, the military, the trades, whatever their dreams may be. The success of every Arlington student is paramount. Increasing academic and professional opportunities, assisting parents in their advocacy efforts, and improving faculty retention, recruitment, and morale is a path there. Among the issues of which I am focusing are incorporating the AFL-CIO's apprenticeship program to the Career Center, institute a grading system that applies Rubik's to bring transparency to grading, formally partner with area businesses and government organizations to enhance students' overall education experience, increase teacher compensation by providing much-needed pay and coal raises, and improving APS's bureaucratic functions to maximize budget dollars. I look forward to discussing with you these and other critical APS issues. While I am a dad, I want all of our students to succeed. Muh taught me that lesson well. I'm Tyrone Sims II, and I ask for your support in this year's school board election. Thank you.
Let's give another round of applause for all our candidates. Now, it's not easy. It's still hard, I think, absolutely, to vote for a poll of elected office. No offense to any other electives in the room, but I'm really grateful we have such a strong field of candidates for the support position. I also want to point out that you have an additional elected official who joined us, the clerk of our court, Paul Ferguson. I saw him on hand.